Hi, everyone. We're going to go ahead and get started. We do realize that the YouTube link is a little problematic right now. We are working on that. Hopefully it'll be up very, very shortly again. We have to go ahead and get started with this meeting. It's already 1:15. So just some, some quick background here. I will say that, you know, this meeting is based on the release of the plan that was released last Friday. You had an opportunity to ask questions through questionnaire. I will say that many, many of you did just that. I spent a better part of the weekend reading every single question. Obviously, I'm not going to be able to answer all the questions, nor will Joel, but we were able to group those into categories and we think we are able to capture what the general themes are about your questions, concerns, insights into reopening schools for next school year. So I will say that the one thing about the Brexwell-Browley Heights City School District is you all are not indifferent when it comes to education. Lots and lots of great questions, lots of insights. So we appreciate that. And this is what this meeting is for. And if we have to have more, we have to have more. So before I turn it over to our superintendent, Joel, I will have the plan up. This is the format of the meeting. We're going to do a presentation on the plan. Hit those categorized themes from the questions that you had asked over the weekend in response to the plan and Joel's constant contact that she received. And then have some time to ask some questions. Now, what I'm going to ask is that you send those questions to me in a chat and I can read them aloud. We're going to try to cover as best we can. But we know that there are many questions that still linger out there. And this, again, is an ongoing process. It's a live document, that plan. And it will change. And after, you know, reading through some of the questions this weekend, it will definitely change. So without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to Joel. I'm going to go ahead and share the screen. Scott, I think you're going to have to share that screen. Scott, can you bring that? There you go. Just bring up, it should be a PDF, no, a PDF. Right, right, no, right there. There you go. Thank you. Okay, Joel, all yours.
Okay, thank you. Good afternoon. Sorry for all the technical difficulties. We had it all figured out and then we didn't. I want to thank all of you for joining in on this very important topic that we're going to be talking about today. And we wanted to make sure that everyone completely understands, you know, the thought process and the why behind our plan and how we got to where it is today. I want to start off by saying that this is a very fluid plan. And what you see here today is not necessarily what it's going to look like before the start of school. As we know, this pandemic has been a very fluid situation. It's changing by the week. And so our plan has to be flexible and agile enough to adjust to what is going on around our state. So I want to start off by talking a little bit about the color-coded system, which is what we based our plan on. And I want to give you some history as to how we landed on why we decided to mirror our plan against the state of Ohio's plan. When this, when schools closed down back in March, superintendents from around the state of Ohio have been meeting on a regular basis. We've been meeting weekly for hours upon hours at times. We have been advising the governor as much as possible, giving him feedback from our vantage point as to what schools should look like, should they be able to reopen in the fall. And unfortunately, while we all love local control of our school districts, our governor also loves that and is not really giving us a lot of guidance. We, as a collective group of superintendents, have asked the government for some guidance on reopening. For example, give us a, give us a, you know, a date that we all start after. Tell us that we have to come back in this format. And then locally, we can make those decisions on how, on how those look. But we wanted some guidance. And in the absence of guidance, the superintendents through most of the state decided that the only guidance that we were given was by the Ohio Department of Health color coding system to track the spread in each of the counties. We needed to tie our plan to that color coding system to provide us some cover. Because when you as parents or as staff members ask us, how did we make the determination to either go to remote learning? Or how did we make the determination to close our schools or to open our schools? Outside of us being any medical professionals, we had nothing to justify a decision on whether to keep buildings open or whether to switch to remote learning. The only cover that our state is providing us is this color-coded system that was come up by the Ohio Department of Health to determine a color coding for counties to look at spread. What we understand from the color coding of the spread is that there are seven criteria that each county that they're looking at. Once a county has reached all seven of those criteria, it needs to stay in that particular color and meet those seven criteria for a period of two weeks prior to the color, then changing either to the next color or going back down to the next level. And so there is a possibility that, you know, after two weeks or after three weeks, you know, you can toggle between any one of those four colors based on where the spread is in our county. Most of the superintendents in our district decided that we needed to use that color coding system to develop our plan around so that we had some guidance or some justification, some rationale to make those decisions about whether or not schools should be open or closed. So the color coding system that you see on, on the plan, which they're working on pulling up, I'm not sure why it's not up there. But the color coding system, as we currently have it, we have that schools would be fully in session if the county is in yellow and orange, a hybrid model if it's red, and all remote learning if the county goes to purple. The county going to purple was a decision that was made by all of the superintendents in northeastern Ohio to say that if we're in purple and the governor decides to shut down the county again for whatever way, how is it that we could all stay in school? And the, and the collective thought amongst all the superintendents in this area was that we probably couldn't stay in school. So all the superintendents in this area have purple as if our county goes to purple, they would go to remote, remote learning. There is some, there's some variety amongst the school districts as to how they grouped those other three colors. If they put yellow and orange together, if they put orange and red together, if they put all three together as either being an all-in or we're on remotes. These are still things that we are talking through. Our current plan actually has us switching to a hybrid model at red. However, that is not set in stone. And I'm going to talk a little bit more about it in a bit about a survey that will be going out to you tomorrow morning to get your feedback on that. We have different ways that we can group those color codings within, within the county or within the state model. And so we're going to ask for your feedback as parents and as staff members on how you feel about how we currently have it and what would be some ideas for you to think about, giving us some opinions on whether or not we should change that and group the different colors together in a different way. So that is why, and that's there, there's a color coding system. That is why, and if you look at our learning models, we have face-to-face and both currently yellow and orange, a hybrid model in red, and an off-site remote learning plan in purple. And so again, we're going to ask you for some feedback on it. Again, this plan is fluid and it's, it needs to be agile and it's going to change probably several times between now and the start of school. Next, I'd like to talk a little bit about the school calendar. It, while it's not part of this plan because our school calendar is different every year. In our current school calendar, we had a lot of conversation around, you know, how do we make it, how do we, you know, do we start after Labor Day? Do we start before? We talked amongst ourselves as superintendents around the districts or around the state. We have some that are not starting until after Labor Day. There's no rhyme or reason as to why they chose to do that. That's just what they chose to do. But there are several districts that are starting at their regular start date. There are several districts that have pushed the student day back to bring staff in for more professional learning and going through procedures and processes if we're going to be in, in the buildings. And so we had parents say to us, you know, school has been out long enough. The kids have been out since March. And then we've had other parents say, no, push it back till after Labor Day. You know, we want to make sure. You know, this, this pandemic, unfortunately, as weeks have gone on, there have been more and more cases. So, you know, you run the risk of that happening where there could actually be way more cases in, in September after Labor Day than there is now. We could see a decrease and not knowing, we have to put a stake in the ground as to when we start school for students. And so certainly if our county changes colors and that's not, you know, we're able to do it and then we will. But if not, we put a stake in the ground and said, this is going to be the start date. There's no magic reason why it has to be after Labor Day. And there's no reason that it, you know, had to be the 19th either. You know, we do have that local control to control when we have kids come to school. And so we went with the middle just to, you know, listen to the parents who said kids have been out long enough and to respect the fact that we wanted to push it back a little bit just to kind of give us some more time to see where this, where this virus is going to go. We also put in a, a automatic remote learning timeframe between Thanksgiving and the holiday break. And we did this to be in a proactive manner, just to be proactive about looking at all the types of sicknesses our staff and our students get during the time of the year. We looked at our own data. This is not necessarily when you will see the peak of flu season throughout the state or throughout the country. But our data shows over, when we did an analysis of when people were absent the most, it was mostly between that Thanksgiving and that holiday break where we see the most absences with student illness and with staff illness. So we did this in a proactive manner to try to say, you know, let, let's shut down the buildings, not have anyone return to the buildings during that period. We'll do another thorough disinfection of the buildings over that timeframe and keep everyone home when we see it from our data that that is when most people are getting ill. And so that is a proactive measure to try to keep our buildings as clean as possible and keep people home during a time where we know that people and our staff are most infectious along with our students. The other thing I'd like to address is, you know, this idea of wearing face masks. I know that this has become a very political issue to wear face masks or not to wear face masks. I have received just as many emails from parents saying, you know, there's, don't wear face masks to just as many people who said, yes, please make sure that all the kids are wearing face masks. Our board had a lengthy discussion about this at our board meeting this past Tuesday and has decided that we are going to make face masks mandatory for grades one through 12. With the understanding that, you know, with preschool and kindergarten, it's going to be difficult to keep a mask on them most of the day. It doesn't necessarily need to be a mask, just some type of face shield. And so we, there are some situations where it's not, it's not practical for a student to wear a mask. Some parents and some kids may have a medical issue that is going to require them not to wear a mask. We probably will have staff members that will have medical reasons as to why they cannot wear masks. And so, you know, we're saying face coverings. People have asked, will there be breaks where kids don't have to wear their masks? Obviously, when kids are eating, they're not going to be wearing their masks. We will install some type of face mask breaks where kids can take them off. So it is especially when we return to school in August and September where it can still be warm, that there would be opportunities for kids to take off masks. But definitely when we're passing in the hallways and anytime where it's almost impossible to social distance when you're walking down a hallway, those will be times where we'll make sure that every student, every staff member is wearing a mask during those times that those would not be considered face mask or face shield breaks during those, those social times when kids are passing in the hallways. Next topic is talking about our online learning. There have been several questions about online learning and what is it going to look like? And are we planning on using our teachers and our staff for, for online learning? One of the reasons we're sending out a survey to all of our families tomorrow is that we need to get some data. As you recall, we sent out a survey in May and we asked families, you know, based on that particular time of that in May, you know, would, if the schools were able to reopen in the fall, would you send your child? And at that time, we had about 75% of our parents say, yes, we're going to send our children to school in the fall. And about 20% said, no, we're not going to send our kids to school. Since this virus has, has, you know, been spreading a lot quicker than I think, you know, everyone anticipated it would, especially as our state has started to reopen, people may feel differently now. And so we need to have very good data to understand how many of our families are actually going to take advantage of being in an online learning versus coming into our buildings. Once we have that data and we have a good number, so we can finalize what that online learning can look like based on those numbers. Yes, ideally, we would like to use our own staff to provide that online learning. This is not going to be the online learning that we experienced in the spring when we had to shut schools down. We realized that that wasn't ideal. And we own that. And we know that we need to do a much better job and provide an online experience that we can with our own teachers that includes daily instruction. And it is happening across all curriculum. And so we are working on that and we are working on what that plant, we have been working on that all summer. But we've been working on trying to have that set up so that we can provide a more comprehensive plan to our parents so they understand what that online platform would look like. I know some people have questioned looking at other online options in terms of, you know, K-12 or some of the other programs that people have utilized for whatever reason in the past. You know, we're, we're, we're very committed and very passionate about using our own staff or our online platform because we can, we can deliver a much more personalized instructional learning platform for our own kids delivered by our own teachers. Many of those other types of online are just your curriculum base. So it will get you through a module where you might read a module and then answer some questions, then be best and then move on to the next module. I, I feel about social emotional learning, kids need to see teachers' faces. Kids need to see familiar faces. The brothers and sisters that had teachers before will, to be able to have and see those, those faces is going to be really important as we look at the social emotional needs of our students rather than having some of our families leave and go on to a platform where virtually there will not be much interaction with anyone that they know or interaction with another adult at all. And so I want to, I want parents to know that if that is something that you're thinking about doing another online option, we are committed to using our staff so that we can provide daily instruction to not only address the instructional needs of our kids, but also to, to be able to be there for the social emotional needs. This has been hard enough on adults. I can't even imagine how it's been on our students. And so really needing to think about if we need to be in remote or if there's families that are just not comfortable sending kids back to school yet, how can we provide that same richness that we can if they were back in the classroom? And we're committed and, and we know that we need to do a better job than we did in the spring for that online learning. We will be able to get you a more detailed plan of exactly what that would look like after we, we compile the survey data, which again is going out tomorrow. And there is a very specific question on the survey asking what families intentions are about online learning or coming back if we can come back in person. And so we're asking families, if you are planning on staying online, that you give us their name and their, the grade level of their students and so that we can start putting together what that online learning will look like. And I talked a little bit about a survey, but yes, so the survey is going to talk about the color coding. We want, we want parents feedback on the color coding. If you, not whether or not you like the color coding, but whether or not you feel that we have it grouped appropriately. If you like that there's only two colors that we have for in-person and a hybrid and remote learning. If you'd like us to look at putting all three of those colors together, yellow, orange and red and saying that's all in or we're all out as two models and get rid of the hybrid. These are questions that we're asking you to, to give us some information on. We also are going to be asking you questions about whether or not you're going to utilize school transportation. As you know, it's, it's, we're doing our best to socially distance. Right now, the recommendation is to have two kids per seat wearing face masks on the bus. So that is the standard that we would be transporting students. If that is something that you're comfortable with, great. So we can get a better number and start routing for bus routes. And it's, if it's something that parents are not comfortable with and you feel more comfortable driving your student to school, we will be looking at those numbers too, to see how many buses we need to take to certain areas throughout our community to make sure that the kids who do require transportation, we can send enough buses there to accommodate. You know, but transportation has been probably, you know, one of the most difficult, as you know, we can put 10 or 15 kids at a bus stop, but socially distanced now, trying to keep that group under, just to be one stop. And so as much information as parents can give us in that survey that we're sending out tomorrow morning at nine o'clock would be most helpful for us to start making and finalizing some of these decisions. We plan on updating this plan on a regular basis. If there are changes to the plan, rather than sending it out to all of you every single time, we will send you an email and say, hey, there's been a change to a plan in this area and keep it live and posted on our website. As you know, we've also had frequently asked questions. We are still taking questions right now live for people to ask questions if we didn't answer them. Most of the questions that parents asked, we have still some outstanding questions about kindergarten. What is, what is happening with kindergarten? Please know that we are having an executive session at our board meeting on Wednesday to talk about kindergarten. So we should have some answers for you and some guidance around that here in the next week or so. The, I'm looking at the questions that were submitted prior to the town hall. Building level plans, you know, our district plan is, is high level. It's kind of like here, here's the big picture of what we're going to be doing around teaching and learning, what we're going to be doing about arrival and dismissal. Each of those building plans, as you know, each of our buildings are different. They have to come up with what those protocols will look like at the buildings. But some of the big questions that people had specifically about the, the clinic area, there will be two different clinic areas in the building. So one, if any child comes down to the office with symptoms, they would be put in a spot where they can be then picked up later by their parents. And then we'll have another area of a clinic in a different area of the building that might be for where kids go that need their daily medication or somebody falls out on the playground and they have a knee scrape and they need a Band-Aid. So we're looking at splitting our clinic space at all the buildings. What that's going to look like at each of the buildings is part of what those building plans are going to have to address at the building level because we can just say we want two areas. The buildings need to figure that out directly. We do plan on, at the elementary school, having lunch in the classrooms. We're still working out whether the kids who purchase their lunch each day would come down to and take their town to the cafeteria to grab their lunch and take it back to their rooms, or if we will have the food delivered to their rooms. In the middle school and high school, they are able through scheduling to socially distance the kids into their current cafeteria spaces and will plan to socially distance at lunch. We do plan to have recess. We'll, we will play, we will feather out the, the play area and probably do some type of rotation throughout the playground. But we definitely would maybe hold off on using balls. But again, those are decisions that need to be made at the building levels. But certainly we are not going to have our elementary school without some capacity to go outside and to run around if it is, even if it's socially distanced, that we do allow them to get rid of some of the, the wiggles that they have throughout the day. Proper ventilation, we are, we are looking at, looking at filter replacement. We currently replace all of the filters in our HVAC systems at the middle school and at the high school at least two times per year. We are looking to change those filters more often to four times per year. We are looking at some other costs that could be associated with that. Our, our equipment, unfortunately, at many of our buildings is very old. And so on, to try to run new equipment and especially in the three buildings that will be closing here in a year and a half and to add that equipment into our middle school and high school would be very difficult, but certainly we are not, not running the cost on that. We're going to be looking at if there's anything more than we can do than a more of a routine filter change in all of our current systems. I know there's been a lot of questions regarding how extracurriculars and athletics and band and choir will look. We are still awaiting guidance from OHSAA on all of that. We don't have any answers. As soon as we get some guidance on that as to what fall sports were going to look like, we will put that out to families and let you know immediately. You know, we are trying to provide our families and our community with information as quickly as we receive it. And so please know that, you know, as we get these plans out and as we're looking at different guidance documents, we're trying to get them to you as soon as they come to us. Unfortunately, this is a decision that I know is going to impact a lot of our students and a lot of our families about what we're doing with athletics. And, and frankly, no one's, no one's made a call yet. The last order that allowed for intra-district competition between kids within our own teams was extended through July 22nd. So that is still allowed to occur. I, I, I have to believe they're probably going to kick it one more week since the official start of the fall season isn't until August 1. I think anyone's afraid to make a call on, on athletics, but marching band specifically will follow whatever guidance we get from OHSAA in terms of how we're going to have band. If there's no fall sports, how, what will band look like? I don't have the answer to that. I don't have the answer to what, to what choir will look like at this time. Right now is they're indicating that the, the virus has spread through singing and water droplets that we may have to look at what choir might look like. But we don't have the answers on that yet either. Some of the concerns that have come up with, with questions about, you know, what are we going to do if somebody gets diagnosed with COVID or we have a case? This is, this is a hard question to answer and here's why. We are not a required reporting entity. So if somebody gets diagnosed with COVID, just like if, if a child comes down with the flu or a child has, a child has strep throat, we find out because a parent has notified us or we find out because somebody has notified us. The health department is not necessarily going to notify us if we have a student or a teacher or a staff member that gets diagnosed with COVID in our buildings because they're not required to do so. What they will do, from my understanding, is the health department contacts anyone that has a positive case and then they try to backtrace where they might have been exposed. And through that, they'll ask them who they've been around, where they've been, and then they try to backtrace that where they might have contracted the virus. It's within that notification of that backtracking that the health department then will call and say, so-and-so, you may have been exposed to COVID. You might want to go get tested. But they won't necessarily call the school to say, hey, somebody got diagnosed and this is what you now need to do. So we are waiting. The CDC is supposed to come out with some guidance on what we do if we have people who have been diagnosed with COVID within the context of our school and within, between our staff or students. So we're waiting on that guidance as well. So please know that we may not necessarily know every time somebody gets diagnosed. It just depends on if somebody's going to let us know. We do have a standard letter that we have written out that will go home to families if and when we do know that there has been somebody who's been infected in one of our buildings. Beekeepers was another question, whether or not we will be running beekeepers. And yes, we have a whole section in that on our plan. We, under the current time, are required to go by the guidance of what they're running for daycare centers, which is nine to one, nine students to one adult. This is a much smaller ratio than what we've had in our current beekeeper program. We are looking at what we can do to provide options for that for parents so that we can serve close to some kid, the same number of kids we were able to in our before and after care. But certainly, please know that those are the restrictions and those are the guidelines that we are required to follow as of now. Should those change as this plan will change? This is certainly something we will keep updated as we know that this is a really important topic for many of our families. So I'm going to stop talking at this moment and I think I hit most of the areas of the questions that were sent ahead of time to us through, through emails. And I know that there's probably some questions coming in now that we haven't answered. So I'm going to look to my counterparts to, to help me hear what those questions are and we'll provide some answers. Okay, can a family choose for one student to learn online? Medically fragile, but another student's absolutely. So when you fill out the survey tomorrow, we are asking you to fill it out for school kid than I am for my elementary student. So please fill one out for each student and you might have different models that work best for your family depending on, on what we're able to do. And again, the band and choir can be done safely. Will masks still be worn? Clearly in, when in band, if we're playing our instruments, no, we weren't, we will not be wearing masks during on choir. It might be a way to run choir to have masks on. Again, we're waiting for some more guidance around that before we say, here's what we might want to do or here's how band is going to look for us for next year. Speech, will speech therapy and pathology services still be available to qualified students? What that, what, yes, what might that look like? Yes, of course. We are required by IEPs to make sure that we are providing special education services to all of our students. One of the things that we have purchased for some of our staff members, specifically our SLPs, would be face would be face shields because we know how much articulation and kids need to see their mouths when they're working on word formations. So we have provided face shields for our SLPs to continue providing services. We also know that some of our most medically fragile and our most profoundly disabled students struggled the most when we had to switch to online learning back in March. We recognize that. And so I need to say that during the time that we have built in this remote learning time between Thanksgiving and and the holiday break, we will make sure that our special needs kids are still coming in to receive their services because we know that some are just not capable of learning remotely online due to the level of their disability. And so we want to make sure again that we do better in that and we are providing face to face services for all of our academically challenged gifted students in some way, shape and form, and some of our highest special needs students during that time so that we make sure that we're hitting all the services that we need. Can some consideration be given to high school labs, chemistry being offered in small groups in person occasionally if the school goes to remote learning, if it goes to remote learning in purple? Certainly, we can consider that. Again, we just need to see where the county would be in purple. The governor is not saying whether or not if the county goes to purple that he is going to put us in shutdown again. And if he is going to put us in shutdown, it might be a little bit difficult to provide all of those students, especially knowing that we want to bring in our most highest need population to still receive those services during those three, those that three week period. So definitely something we will consider. Again, we have to be very flexible and be able to change. And what we're thinking right now may change in three weeks or four weeks or five weeks from now. So, you know, while I say we have to look at that now, it might be something, yeah, we can plan on doing that. We just, we stay flexible and patient with all of this because things are changing by the day and we're building a plane as we're flying it and trying to. So again, we're going to collect that data tomorrow. We want it to be with our staff. We feel that our teachers can provide the the best service to our students and also provide that social emotional support that our kids need. Who better than knows that knows our kids than us? And we want to be able to do that with our own staff and make it just a rigorous, but very a very a time that teachers and students can still connect. I worry that if we go to another online platform where it's not our stu-, our teachers teaching, that we're going to lose that connection with our kids. And that's the last thing that our kids need right now, as I stated before. You know, this is hard enough for adults. I can't even imagine what our, what our kids are going through right now. The entire county's infection rate when the cases are tracked by zip code. That is a great question. And so, yeah, we have had this question before, even by some of our own administrators to say, you know, like in Brexwell and Broadview Heights and part of North Royalton, we might have twenty cases. But, you know, in Cleveland on the east side, there's, you know, that's where all the cases are. Why the county? Well, the same thing is, you know, what the same, I guess, the the other question would be, we also butt up against Summit County. So if Summit County is a different color than us and we're open and they're closed or they're closed and we're open, we're going to run into that same idea ever all over because of where we are located on our county. And so we can look at that, but then if, you know, if Brexwell or Broadview Heights and our numbers stay down low and North Royalton goes up and they close next door to us, you know, people travel. And and so the idea of the the number of cases are. And we also have teachers and staff members that live all over the place. Not all of our staff members just live in Brexwell and Broadview Heights too. So, you know, when you're bringing in people from all over, we need some cover or some standard to say, this is how we're going to make decisions. And and that was the the logic behind while many of the superintendents have aligned their plans to the color coding system. If we say our intent intention is to do virtual, can we change our mind in person if we feel that the virtual will not meet the needs? So we, that's a great question and thank you for asking that. In the survey, if you decide that you would like to do online learning, we are asking families to commit to that for at least one semester. And the reason we are doing that is to limit exposure. If the whole idea is to try to social distance, we cannot have kids coming in and out of the building, you know, after two weeks saying this isn't working. So we're asking for a semester, a semester commitment from that. Towards the end of the first semester, we will send out a survey to those parents who were, who did the online learning and ask if they would like to come back in person. It should be able to do so for the second semester so that we can make those adjustments and we have time to do that. Prior asking that if you do decide that you want a full online option, that you make that commitment for at least one semester, you absolutely can do it for the whole year if you know that right now. But we need one semester so we can plan accordingly. Can students on IEPs or Title I opt in for online learning exclusively the first semester? They can, and we will do our best to provide those IEP services to all students. I know, again, I I know that that was one of the areas that and rightfully so, that we needed, we needed to, it's an, it's an opportunity for improvement. And so I want to make sure that if that is an option and those students are on an IEP, that we make sure that we have that staff correctly and that we're able to provide the services that the kids need based on their IEPs.
Okay, thank you. Okay, which ones? Okay. And level four, are these kids still on site? If so, how will they get their gen ed classes and specials classes? Where, so we're, if we are going to bring in, the thought was is that we would bring in our special needs kids for their special services. So whatever their IEPs are stating that they need and then those other classes that they, their gen ed classes, they would be able to remotely do those online with with their regular teachers. For students in this category who opt out to stay home, are their case managers still responsible for their interventions and data collections?
Yes. So if, you know, you're for special needs teachers, your caseloads will still be your caseloads. And but we will definitely try to, if we have many students on IEPs that want to stay online, maybe there is a teacher then that just does those kids who are using those online services. And the other caseloads would then be adjusted it within the building for those kids who will be in the building. Why is there no air conditioning in three elementary schools? Yes, we, we understand that there's no air conditioning in the three elementary schools. They've been like that. And we will, we know it's going to be hot. It's hot every year. We've done, we've tried to do some adjusting on, you know, the calendars. And, you know, my first year here, the hottest week of the year was the week after Labor Day. So, you know, we know the buildings are warm. That's why we will do what we can to keep them aired out as much as possibly possible within the safety, within our safety plans as well.
I don't see any other questions. Okay. All right, we got more questions. Okay. The working board meeting, Joel said that not all teachers may have equipment to conduct remote learning. Will this be in place for the, yes. So great news, our, our new tech director had informed me after I said that at the meeting that they are here and they are, they are will be in and probably for the start of school, they're working on getting those formatted. So we have purchased equipment for our teachers to be able to do that, yes. If we choose down at a level four to three or three to two before we are comfortable with our kids moving on that stage, what options do parents have to adapt or what we feel safe for our kids?
I'm not sure I understand the question. Right now, we're, we, our county is in red. It was start at one point, thinking that it was going to move to purple. That didn't happen because our county did not meet those criteria to to move it to purple. It, it, they had actually a number of cases drop. So I think we need to look at that and 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 really get the feedback from the parents on the survey as to how you would like us to group those colors. And we've given you the options of how they can do that. And once we have feedback on that, it might be that all three of those colors are are grouped together. So yellow, orange and red, and it's all in or all out, and we don't have a hybrid model. And so then at that time, parents would need to make the decision based on, you know, what we plan to do at the district level, what we plan to do at the building level. You know, do you feel comfortable sending your kids to school? And we know, we know that your, your situations and our family situations may change. You know, right now, there could be a feeling, but, you know, you know, God forbid, any one of our students or a family member gets sick over the next two weeks. That might change how you, how you feel about sending your child back in the fall. We understand that. We are trying to be as flexible as we can. That's why, you know, this plan is a fluid plan. It needs to change and it needs to be personalized to what our families want. We are doing the best we can to keep our kids as safe as we can. We care about them. We understand that education, they need to be back in school. We understand that and we are doing everything we can to keep them as safe as possible. And we, we need them here for for their own social emotional reported, it, support. This has been, you know, very difficult on all of us. And I, I think that, you know, we've got it, we've got a proactive plan in place, but certainly we are not going to penalize anybody for deciding that this, even with all the safety precautions and the PPE that we're putting in place in our buildings and the temperature checks that we're going to be doing on our kids and our staff members. If parents still feel like this is not something that they're comfortable with, we understand and nobody will be penalized for making a decision to keep their children at home. When do we need to make our final decision by online versus person for first semester? So we're going to send out the survey tomorrow. And again, it's just for us to start planning to make some staffing decisions around what our online plan can look like. We will definitely send out another survey closer to the time when school opens up to see if this is still your intent. So it might be more personal. To say your intent was to come back to school, is this still what you're thinking? Change the day before school. Will younger kids like first and second grade be given a device to be homeschooled on? That is a great question. We send all of our kids grades three through twelve home with a device at the end of the year, and we did not recollect those over the summer. We still know that we need devices for K one. Unfortunately, if you've tried to order any type of Chromebook recently, we've got a waiting list. So it might be that for the first few weeks until we get, we get those devices in, where we might have to provide units for for students. And that's why we have for the extra days at the beginning of the year for our staff, they have five days to work on some of that planning right now. Devices anywhere, it's, it's almost a six month waiting period to get a mass number of devices. Certainly, you can go to to Best Buy and buy one, but you can't go and order six hundred of anything and get them anytime soon. And that's, that's a problem throughout the country as, you know, every school district is dealing with. How do we provide instruction and provide a device to each student? So we are working on that. It is, it is in order to have a device for everyone. We expect the kids to keep their devices that they were given at the end of last year. Certainly, if something is broke or the battery died, we're going to have, you know, opportunities for people to come in ahead of time to make sure that those devices are working appropriately for all of our students. For kindergartners, half day, will they do online during their school hours or will it be in the morning throughout the day? So we're still working, we're still working on kindergarten. As I said, we're having a conversation with our board on Wednesday to talk about kindergarten and what that would look like if it would just be in the morning. We don't know. If it goes to remote, it's going to be how we deliver instruction. Definitely, we want to make sure that we're providing families some flexibility on their end. We've also looked into some live streaming equipment for our teachers as well. And so we're, we're getting prices on on things that we might be able to live stream. So it might be that we can schedule and say, you know, this time, between this time and this time. Still up in the air though, in terms of whether or not we're able to get the technology in on time to provide that.
Is there still recommended class size limit to optimize social distancing in the classrooms? How do you propose to control airflow in the classrooms?
Well, but how, how much can we socially distance kids away from one another? So we are going to be moving some current furniture and things out of rooms that will not be able to use next year. And one example is looking at the carpets that we have in many of our elementary schools. We, many of our teachers, they do a fabulous job of having a social circle in the morning. Obviously, with social distancing, we're not going to be able to do some of those things in the same manner. So looking at removing some of the carpets that are in the rooms, removing small group tables because again, with social distancing, we're not going to be able to do small groups or have kids come together at a small table like that. So, you know, we're, we're asking a lot of our teachers to be able to think about how we're going to deliver instruction differently with social distancing, but removing some of that non, that furniture and those carpets that we're not able to use because of social distancing gives us more flexibility in spreading out our, our chairs and our desks so kids can be socially distanced in the classroom. As teachers and students recover from COVID, they would have developed, they will have developed antibodies. Will they be separated from those who have not had it? We, so we're not going to know who's not had it or who has had it. Again, if we're not told or what that might look like. I am currently working with Metro Hospital to try to get a testing site set up here on our, on our campus at all of our buildings so that if parents want to opt to have students tested or staff wants to test, that we're able to provide that as a service to our families. And so we are working through the details on whether or not we're going to be able to provide that for the fall. More information on that to follow, but certainly, you know, we can't mandate that people get tested. And again, it's going to be whether or not parents and staff members want to share whether or not they've, they've have that. And so in the, in the absence of knowing if everyone is going to share that information, I don't know if I can answer that, that question. How quickly will the school level change based on the state level? So the state level says that you have to be at that particular color for a period of at least two weeks. So you have to show either a decrease in the seven criteria or an increase in the seven criteria over a period of two weeks. So it wouldn't be like that our, it would be a day to day change for our kids to say, okay, today you're remote and tomorrow you're not. It would be, this is two week period. This is how, this is the status of our county right now. This is what, you know, our learning plan looks like for that particular. Will peer models attend preschool at stepping stones? Yes, we will still be having our peer models attend preschool at stepping stones. It's very important for us to make sure that we're providing that modeling for our preschool kids, still within the context of the guidance and the ratios that that we're allowed to do. I have a child in the M to Z group and watch the kids A and watch kids A to L. Any chance in grouping them together to go to school on the same days? So if we stay with the hybrid model, if that's still something that parents want to provide feedback and think that we still should look at a hybrid model, the A to L and M through Z was a decision based on the data of our kids and where we're actually looking at almost fifty percent and fifty percent. So that L was not picked, it wasn't picked randomly. We looked at all of our kids and then we took the breaking point as to where, you know, the kids were. So it was an even fifty fifty split. So we know that there might be some exceptions, but certainly I don't want to say that, that we're going to, you know, make an exception because of, you know, babysitting or what, what the issue might be. We did that based on social distancing and having about fifty percent of our kids coming two days and fifty percent of our kids on the other two days. So do transportation plans impact those students being bused to other schools outside the district? We are still required by law to bus all of those kids to the parochial schools that are within our district. And so we will still be providing busing for those students as well as we are required to do so by law. For high schoolers also attending the career center, will they be able to do their high school classes online and go to the career center for their small tech class? I, yes. David Mangus just sent out their career tech plan, what I believe they are doing there. And I have to, I'll have to, and we can post it for you on our website. You can see the plan as well. What, what he's planning on doing is having all the lab portions in CVCC and then any classroom piece is going to be delivered online. The county might change the alert level every week. If we go to purple one week and then it changes back to red the next, how soon does the hybrid model resume? So my understanding from the county, it's the alert level will be in place for at least a period of two weeks. It will not change every week because they have to, they're setting two weeks to see those seven criteria. So it would not be that it would be every week. It would be minimum every two weeks if we decide to stay there. But again, we're, we're still seeking feedback from our families on that hybrid model. We have it set at red right now. It might be something that our family say, no, we don't want to do that. We either want to be all in or all out. And we are totally flexible to look at that data and to see what our families have to say and what our community has to say about that. We've heard from several families that, you know, that becomes a, if you're working full time, that's really hard on families, like how do you plan for that? And so we understand that. Again, the, the whole coloring system and coding was, you know, to provide us some cover as to how we make those decisions to switch between those learning models. And so that's what we did. But we are very open to looking at grouping those red, yellow and, and red, yellow, red, orange and yellow levels in a different way if the current way we have it is not working for our families and our community. Is a preschool class going to have an option for online learning? We have to talk through that more and I, and I'm glad that, you know, our new director of of special education is with us and is starting here very soon. We need to look at that because We need to look at that because the, the, the appropriateness of putting a, um, to putting a preschool, um, especially one. That might have special needs on a computer as their first learning experience is probably not developmentally appropriate. And so we need to look at ways that maybe we can have an online option where we're doing activities, but not a full online delivery model of, of services for our preschool students. Can you mandate temperature checks by performing them yourselves instead of trusting parents to ta- ta- to check temperatures? So we, we are and not, not because we don't trust our parents, but we feel, um, we feel that we have the capability of doing that uh prior to kids coming into the buildings. So we have um come up with a plan to make sure that we check temperatures. I know for the kids um that would be riding the buses. They will be checked before they get off the bus. And if they have a temperature, we're going to keep the kids on the bus and send the kids off that don't have a temperature so that we are, you know, keeping those kids um in a place and making phone calls to parents. What that will look like at drop off, we will have people out there. I think we've spent a ton of money on to, um, the. No touch thermometers so that we have multiple, multiple thermometers at each one of our buildings so that we can make sure that we um are temperature checking all of our kids before they walk into our buildings. Did fifth graders not get the chance to tour the middle school? They have never been, that's building is very unfamiliar. Will there be a tour day? Yes, I can see that being a tour day. I'm gonna leave that up to um the middle school team. I, I know they have thought about how do we, how do we integrate um new students into our buildings? Just as probably many of the eighth graders may or may not have gone to the high school yet. So definitely look for those in our buildings plans. Certainly we will do that in small groups so that we're not bringing the entire fifth grade class in at once to, to be able to do that. But we will come up with a plan to make sure that those kids have that opportunity to see the middle school. Think we had a couple more. Okay, if students choose an online option, can they still participate in athletics clubs and activities? Absolutely. Can middle school students get letter grades since they are being prepped for high school? Again, more conversation with our admin team about what grading is going to look like, especially, you know, if we're having an online option and there is still school in place. Certainly I could see us going back to a graded system. Um, you know, what we did in the spring was not knowing. We, we didn't know what we were going to be um looking at or if that was going to last. If you recall when we went out in March, we, the. The shutdown was only supposed to last three weeks. And then we were told in the middle of that shutdown that it was going to last for the rest of the school year. So we made the best decision we could based on that scenario. Now that we have an idea of what school might look like, um, we can, we can put some practices back into place that have been part of um what we've done in the past. Any thoughts on having teachers switch classrooms for subject changes during the day instead of students, especially fourth and middle school? I know that the, um, the, the administrators have talked about that, having the teachers move rather than the kids move. Still, again, those would be building level plan things and those are all capable, those are all things that are possible. And I think that our administrative team has taken that into consideration is. And, and the whole idea is how do you, how do you move the kids less and move the, move the adults more? Um, and so, you know, we'll, we'll look into that because it's, it's, it's easier to move, you know, 30 adults through a building more so than it is to move 400 kids. And we want to limit that as much as we possibly can. If a child is diagnosed with COVID and the school is aware, what happens to the rest of the children in the class? Does a classical online for a two week period? It's a great question and that's part of the guidance we're hoping to receive from the CDC. We don't know what, what happens if you have one case, if it's a mandatory 14 day quarantine of that class. Certainly if the kids have been interacting and we're, and again, one of the building plan ideas is to not have those, you know, student groups. And have kids intermix with different student groups to minimize exposure if that happens. But we're waiting on guidance on that and we're hoping, we're hoping to see what that is very soon. Is Beekeepers going to open during the extended break from November until January? That is, that is our current plan to do so. If we're, um, if we're a little bit so that we can offer that service to more people. Definitely would have study tables then for those kids that are at Beekeepers during that time, um, so that they can still get their remote instruction from their sti- from their teachers. Thank you. All right. You have any questions? Can I comment on how PE classes will look? How is social distancing going to be possible? Great question. I, you know, I just, I think that we have to first look at the guidance from the OHSAA and then see what they're going to even do about sports. But PE classes. You know, I, I envision, uh, as I talk to, um, I talked to a couple of our PE teachers, you know, what does that look like for wellness? You know, can we do individuals? I know, I know, uh, we had a couple of our PE teachers who do a great job of wellness, you know, looking. At not necessarily engaging in interactive sport. Now, you know, the kids are allowed to play volleyball right now, looking at running, looking at self, self wellness of. You know, health and nutrition and looking at, you know, doing physical activity in a different way that people can do individually. As opposed to, you know, engaging in a lot of group um activities at this time. You know, unfortunately, we all need to think differently about what instruction is going to look like, but certainly part of physical education is looking at wellness and looking at personal wellness and. You know, setting up PE to run more as, you know, kind of a, a self workout type of thing where kids are developing skills. But are still able to physically um be active within the context of the school day. When will building specific plans be available? Our admin. Even working over the time that they're off to get these plans together because we know our community wants to see these building plans. We have our administrative uh retreat set up. Um, definitely it, it's a retreat as we call it, but it's really a meeting, three days of meetings. To make sure that we have all of those plans aligned and that we can talk through some of those last minute things. That administrative retreat is the first week in August that we will have those and hopefully we'll get them posted, you know, soon after that. We will have a better indication by then as to how many um of our families are going to want the online option. And so, you know, I would just encourage you to keep. Up on your emails. We will be sending updates as we get them. We will continue to be very transparent about our plan. Please know that we know that the whole idea of reopening schools is not, it, it's. It's become a political issue unfortunately, and we are doing the best we can with the information we have available to us right now. And we're going to continue to monitor that and, and restart and redo our plan as we need so that we're constantly making the best decisions for our kids and for our staff. Since all students are virtual through January, but the semester ends July, can students who are online learning return when the students come back from break? Well, we, we'd have to wait till the end of the semester just to complete whatever semester requirements are for those courses. So we would say that those kids, if they wanted to switch from online. Back in person, it would still have to be after that January 14th date. Okay. How will we hold the teachers accountable for if we go online learning? As a realtor, I'm deemed essential, aren't teachers? I suggest they report to school if we need them to move to online. We've talked about that. We are going to be in conversations with our unions to talk about what that remote and online learning um expectation will be. Again, we, when we had to switch back in the spring, some of our um staff members did not have the equipment. They now have the equipment. So what that will look like. To make sure that there is daily instruction um happening from all of our staffs when we go to the remote learning. As well as for those students who opt for our online option, um, we will be in conversations with them, uh, working through that. Okay, you're good. Good. Um, as of last, our district was not providing hand sanitizer is proven, uh, is proven to kill COVID-19. Will students have access to the proper hand sanitation materials? Yes, we are. So part of our PPE, there will be hand sanitizing stations all over the buildings. We have hand sign it. If you've been to any of our buildings, most recently you will see a table um set up where there's a temperature check, check, we're logging temperatures. We have face masks available for those who did not use their face mask, but there were, we have purchased as a district hand sanitizer for all of our buildings. All of the PPE will be purchased by the district. And provided um to all of the buildings. Well, kindergarten be five days a week. We, again, we're having a board meeting on Wednesday and we will be talking about kindergarten. Um, and what kindergarten will look like. I will have more information for you in the next um couple of weeks. Why is there not an all in or all, uh, I'll opt, I'll out? So that's, so there could be. Um, I, I think the, that's what we're asking for in the survey tomorrow is for. Parents to give us their feedback on, you know, do you want an all in or an all out? And that's totally fine. We can absolutely um not have a hybrid model. If that is what our community is telling us that that, that they don't want. And so that is a question. And if that is something that you feel strongly about, we encourage you to answer the survey um based, based on that. That's one of the choices that you can provide to us. Um, I'd like to hear the district learn about teacher led online instruction and what would be different. So I, that, that's a great question. You know, what did we learn? We learned, we learned a lot of things. We learned that, you know, when, when the governor shuts you down with two days notice, there's not a lot of time to plan for that. And what we also learned was that. You know, we need to do a better job of providing professional learning for our, for our teachers to be able to um provide online experiences because even if we are not online. Any college student will tell you these days, including my own, there is some online learning component to every class that a kid is taking at college. There's an online learning. Component to almost every job. You know, I had to learn Zoom, which I was not, I didn't know how to do it at first. So I had to learn it. There's a learning component to always have some knowledge on how to learn on a, on a remote platform. And so. You know, what we learned is, is that even if we are in session, there is some validity, validity to having kids learn and be able to learn on an online platform. So, you know, we need to provide some more professional learning to our staff so that they're able to do that and do it seamlessly and see how it fits into instruction. And we also learned that, you know, it, it's, it's difficult when you were put into a situation on lockdown uh like that and you've got four or five kids in one home and a mom and a dad who are still also. Learning or having to work remotely. That's got to be so difficult to manage and so stressful. And so that balance between what is, what is. Acceptable and what is um developmentally appropriate for kids to sit in front of a screen for how long? How do you balance that with also providing some um different types of learning opportunities for kids? And so I, we've done a lot of self-reflection on that and said, you know what? We didn't, we probably didn't do that well. And it is a matter of fact, we didn't do it well. Um, we did, our teachers did the best they could under the circumstances that they had, were put under that, you know, no one was planning on being out for the whole year. The superintendents found out that the school was shutting down at the same time the world did. We had no prior knowledge that was happening. So I think we did the best we could, but we certainly learned and we know that we can do better and we need to do better for our kids. Will there be leniency in having students stay home on extremely hot days because masks are mandatory? Gosh, haven't, haven't thought through that, but thank you for the question. Definitely something we'll throw out to our team. We did have a couple calamity days over the last couple of years for it being hot. But we'll see where, we're going to have to see where that at. That's, you know, the dreaded snow day question or the hot day question. Are we going to have kids at school? But certainly. Knowing that there's a mask requirement um with kids, if we're in session, we'll definitely look at that a lot more closely. Required to master during, during physical activity. If you're talking about during um physical education classes uh right now, and, and this is where, this is. This is why this job is great right now. So you have OHSAA who has come out in the Ohio, high school athletic association. I keep saying that, assuming everyone knows what that is, um, has come out to say when the kids are engaged in their physical activity of whatever it is, so playing football or playing baseball, they do not need to wear a face, face mask during that time. Even with cross country, if the kids are running, they do not need to wear their face masks while they are performing that physical activity. So right now I would say no, if the kids are running or they're doing something like, like that, they would not necessarily need to wear their face mask as following the OHSAA guidance. On that, um, when people are doing physical activity. And the reason I bring this up into this forum is we've had a couple of situations where people have taken pictures of our kids and said, you know, our kids aren't wearing face masks. Please know that the guidance on the face mask during physical activity through OHSAA is different from the mandatory um face mask order that has been handed down for Cuyahoga County. So our kids are permitted not to wear their face masks when they're, when they are participating in their physical activity. And, and they are required to put them back on when they are done. So um for people who have seen. Our kids without masks on while they're act- actively engaged in their activity, they are not required to wear them. Good. Okay. Oh, attendance. How will that look if we are in hybrid or online? Oh, that's a great question too. We did receive some guidance from um the Ohio Department of Education to talk about how we are going to monitor attendance, but because there will be daily instruction, there will be a daily attendance taken. You know, some of the other things that we learned from online learning too, uh, from what we did in the spring is that, you know, we did have many of our teachers who had a regular time that they were providing instruction. And, you know, the reality is we had many kids who just didn't sign into that particular class. So. You know, our online learning has to be flexible, but we also have to recognize the fact that, you know, there may have been um several teachers that were providing daily instruction even in the spring. But many of our kids were not, were not signing into that particular, um, that particular class. So. There is guidance on attendance. It will be taken. Um, our principals are aware of that guidance and what that looks like and will be informing our teachers about what they need to do in terms of um recording that. When starting after Labor Day, give the district more time to do professional development. So we've been doing some professional development um this whole entire time. Scott Kinkoff has been fantastic in providing a lot of the professional development through Zoom meetings since the start of this back in March. And so we will continue to do that. Um, and I think we have given um ample time to make sure that our staff is aware of the new protocols that will have to be followed if they're in the buildings as well as being given. Plenty of time to get some of those lessons together uh to start the school and even to start preparing for the remote learning mandatory between Thanksgiving and the holiday break. Will you lessen the amount of kids out for recess? Example, half of third grade or only, yes, we're going to, the elementary, um, the elementary uh. Principals are looking at different schedules. It may be that we don't tie recess to lunch either, which would eliminate that, that, that question was if we would send half the kids out. So. Looking at recess differently, it may be that, you know, recess isn't tied to lunch. So you might go out for a 20 minute period, you know, when it works best for. The teacher and not tie it to definitely a lunch plan. We know that we have contractual um issues that we need to work around in terms of, you know, teachers are given a certain uh. Minutes of, of duty free lunch. And so yes, we'll work around that in terms of lunch, but certainly recess doesn't necessarily need to be tied to lunch. It's just the way that we've always done it. But certainly look at a different way of, of providing recess for our kids. If a child gets COVID or quarantined as a precaution, do they have an online schooling? What happens if a child is out for an extreme amount of time? Can they somehow make the time up? Yes, just like now, we have kids that are out for an extended period of time. They might due to a hospitalization or, you know, due to an extended illness will definitely, I mean, all, all work will be able to be made up, especially if kids have to quarantine because of, you know, somebody in their family has, has. Contracted COVID, you know, we will make sure that no time is missed or no classwork is missed for kids. Some classes still do not provide any virtual instruction while other classes have live daily online. To provide remote, how to provide a robust remote learning experience that is consistent for all students. You know, I, again, I, I think that's something that we learned from what we did in the spring. We need clear guidelines, guidelines on what that looks like. So, you know, we're saying that if we have an online. Option for parents, it needs to be daily instruction. That wasn't necessarily how it came out in the, in the spring. And that's what we learned. We know that it's got to be daily instruction. And how, you know, how we will monitor that and have, you know, check in points for, you know, what that looks like. So we, we know that, we've learned it and we. Absolutely know that we will need to do a better job here in the fall than we, than we did in the spring. Is it possible for us to change the start of the time to after Labor Day so the staff can have the professional development needed to prepare for an excellent distance learning and the help? Address the heat. So, you know, certainly again, who, we have no control over the weather and I, I know that, you know, the, the week after Labor Day has been the hottest weeks uh and in several, a couple of the years that I've been here. Um, and so I don't know if that's going to change that. I think the professional learning that we're providing um will be ample time for our teachers to prepare and be rightfully prepared. Plus, we don't know what we're preparing for, you know, right now. I, I, we're preparing that we want our kids here in school. And so if that changes any time between now. You know, maybe, maybe it is that we look at bringing back the teachers to, to work for a longer period of time. But right now, I think our schedule allows enough time for our staff. To adequately prepare and it brings our kids back in a timely manner that is not too early to kind of give this another week to watch uh as to see what's going on and to see what our county is going to do. Clarify, if we go back to orange or yellow, we can go back to full time in class. That's what our current plan says that if we were in. That's what our current plan says that if we were in orange or yellow, that we would, you know, bring back kids fully to our buildings. But here again, this is an opportunity for our community to weigh in on the survey to determine if that, if you want to keep it that way, keep a hybrid and red and the remote in purple, or if you want to take those three colors of yellow, orange and red and put them together and say, we're all in or all out and forget the hybrid model, that those are all options that, you know, we're still being very flexible and want your input on what that should look like. Can you comment on the planned fully online break for Thanksgiving until holidays? Is this only at levels three or four or this or all levels? This would be at all levels. So this is just a proactive way that we can close our buildings down, keep people separated during a time where our data suggests that that's when we have the most staff and student absences due to illness. We looked back at our our historical data on that, and that's when we have the most sickness, whether in, you know, God forbid, I don't want it to be COVID, but from flu or from people being out with strep. And so that would be regardless of what our county is doing. But certainly something that we talked about at the board meeting, you know, if indeed that it looks like our county is at a point where it's yellow or an orange and it's and it's going down and our cases are going down, we can, we can, you know, before that actually pull back on that if we want and and keep the kids in in our buildings. We just want to be, we, this was a proactive measure that we put in place. Certainly, we are being flexible and willing that if we if we see that our numbers are going down throughout the county, we will send out another parent survey to say, here's what we're thinking. Would you like to the kids to stay in those three weeks? Or would you like them to stay on the mandatory remote learning for those three weeks? And get some feedback from our families. Again, we're trying to be as flexible, but yet, you know, give you something to think about when you are making a decision as to whether or not you're going to return your children to school. But at the same time, we want to be flexible enough that we know that this plan is agile and it's fragile and it's fluid and it's going to change depending on, you know, where we are and where our families are in terms of how we are planning for the safe return of our students. And we acquired the technology that would allow our teachers to livestream in their classrooms, at least at a high school level. We are ordered. It's in the process. It's in, it's it's on order and we're we're looking at that equipment right now. So once we get it and but again, as I said before, getting any type of technology right now has been more of an issue than we ever thought it would be, but we are definitely working on it. What is the plan for classrooms of a teacher who tests positive, assuming you are notified, especially in the middle in high school buildings? You know, we are still waiting for guidance from the CDC on what we do if that does happen, because now you have a teacher who, you know, may have 150 kids that they have seen during that course of the day. And so once we get that guidance, we will absolutely share it with our community and and let you know our plans around that. And if we are notified, what that notification will look like and how we will be able to notify our families, if at all. Will teachers or counselors be involved with online students providing positive coping skills? Yes. So we, our guidance counselors have been, you know, checking in on students, even starting with last March, we had, we're checking in with students. So our guidance counselors will still be available to check in with our students online. Again, just like with special ed, the case, the the caseloads won't change at the high school. However, the alphabet, it's A through G and, you know, even if those kids are online, there would, it would still be an expectation that the counselors are working with the kids, even the ones that are online, as well as the kids who are in the actual building. Okay. In class, will there be a student every other seat or will seats be more spaced out and will this cause class to be half sized? So, no. So some of the things that we talked about before, like taking out rugs and taking out the small group tables to allow us to spread the kids out. We are using the American Pediatrics Guidelines on social distancing and with students, they recommend anywhere from three to six feet. So we're looking at that three foot to be able to spread the kids out as much as possible throughout the context of the room. And we will be asking staff members to take home things that are that are not going to be needed in our classrooms next year as we will take out furniture so that we're able to spread those kids out farther in the classrooms. How will we receive the survey online or in the in the mail? The survey is going to be in a constant contact email that you will get from me tomorrow morning. And then we can probably also put the survey up on our website if you do not, if you do not subscribe to our constant contracts. Well, online classes, will it be online classes of school cannot open? But that's going to depend on the color of the county and what our feedback from the survey tells us. Is there any way for our county goes to purple zone that we can continue in school learning, maybe through the hybrid model? Well, and so that's one of those questions that I can't answer yet because we don't know what the other stipulations are going to be if the county goes to purple. So if the county goes a purple right now, there, you know, if there he's going to issue another stay at home order, which in that case, we would not be able to do that. So and it was decided amongst the superintendents in Northeast Ohio that we need, we need some common ground. And so, you know, we all decided that if the county went to purple, that's when we were going to switch to remote learning. And so we also don't want to be the only school that is providing in person education for all of our students. If the county goes to some type of stay at home order again, we don't want to be put in that position that we're still, you know, bringing our kids out. So collectively, we stuck together a superintendent to say, if the counties in purple, we're going to, we're going to follow whatever the orders are for that color and just do remote learning in that purple scenario. So for the high school, the plan is to switch classes if in school like they have been doing. So we've been talking a lot at the high school, you know, is there a way to kind of, you know, contain the students a little bit more? So you're not having them walk all over the highways. And so I know the high school is working on that plan to figure out how they can do that. Certainly at the high school, it's not as easy to move teachers because each kid in a particular class has a different schedule. So how do you know which teacher is going to go to which class? And so, you know, it becomes a little bit more problematic at the high school, but certainly we've been working with our high school administration to help think through some different scenarios so that we can minimize the amount that students are moving around as much as possible. As far as attendance for hybrid online learning, if only in another fashion. So if there's certainly, you know, if if a parent is to go to work, but they want their child child to stay home, I'm sure there is some, you know, possible form of childcare, if it's a middle school or high school kid, student. You know, we would be able to still provide that online. It would have to be, you know, taking your device or taking the student's device to whatever they are staying in terms of their childcare. Would gifted classes be a part of the online option for example, double accelerated math and rich language arts, etc.? So this is, this is a great question. And, you know, we are looking through this. This is why we need the data from people to find out what they're, what they plan on doing next year. So when we start, when we have you fill out the survey tomorrow and you put down your student's name and their grade level, you know, there might be some of those special circumstances where, you know, I want my kid to take this because you've already signed up for classes, at least at the middle school or at the high school. You sign up for them. So we have your schedule. So those kids who sign up for online, we're going to have to pull those schedules and say, you know, what are we able to offer? And so there might be situations where if you opt for online, there might be a situation where you might not be able to take an elective course because it's online, because we don't have a teacher or somebody that's able to provide that class. So that's why the survey tomorrow, it's going to be really important that we get an idea of what we're looking at so we can start staffing and planning according to what families need and want. Okay. Will students with IEP special needs be going to school every day or will they be going two days in online learning? So this is going to depend on the needs of the students more so than it's going to be a set schedule. Yes, we want to provide as much of the special education services as we can in person. And because what we learned from from March is that some of our special needs have a device and receive their education services. So we want to provide as many in person services for our special needs kids as we possibly can. So we're going to have to look at those IEP students that sign up for online to determine what those needs are and what we can provide online that is developmentally appropriate for those students and what we have to still provide in in person. Since we are in red, are you going two days on or two days off? So that would be the current plan if we started school today. But tomorrow, again, we're sending out a survey and asking parents if they are okay with the what we have come up with, or would you like to see that changed? Still deciding, the question is, do teachers report in purple? Again, we're going to be in conversations with our union to talk about what that looks like, if the expectations will be that teachers are coming into the buildings. Of course, socially distanced because if everyone's in their classrooms, they will be and to provide instruction from here, or if that is something that they're able to do remotely, but that has decision has not been finalized. What does Wednesdays look like in the hybrid model? Will sanitation practices be complete? Are teachers staying on campus to clean their classrooms and materials? So in the hybrid model, the teachers are still here five days a week. The kids would not be here on Wednesday as it would be a day, another sanitation day the way to sanitize the classrooms. If a high school student elects online, can they still come up to school for their choir class or extracurriculars? Yes, depending on what those are going to look like. So we're still waiting for guidance on choir and some of the extracurriculars and the sports. If we're even still having them the fall, which again, we have not heard from OHSAA yet, so I don't know. But certainly if a student is online, just like if we have a student who is homeschooled right now, they are allowed to participate in our athletics and any of our extracurriculars. So it would be no different for our students since they are still our students and still enrolled as BBH students. Can you clarify about what symptoms will be tolerated for kids in school? My daughter has seasonal allergies that can cause a severe cough and congestion in the following months. Will she be able to attend? You know, I think we're going to go, when we look at, when we look at sickness, you know, we're asking parents to be very diligent about not sending your students if they are contagious. So allergies, to my knowledge, and again, I'm not a medical doctor, are not contagious. So if there is something, you know, we may require a little bit more of documentation of some of the things that our kids might be presenting with so that we don't send them home for something that they would not be contagious for. Will there be daily high, high touch surface cleaning, disinfecting with the school? Yes. So, you know, rethinking our custodial staff's responsibilities and, you know, what we're going to be providing in the classrooms and for teachers to have, you know, their hand sanitizers in all the classrooms and things of that nature. We have talked to our about thinking about things differently, like doorknobs and some of those things that people touch on a regular basis that we did not that you don't really think about outside of the fact that we're having a pandemic right now. And so you're thinking about these things. And so their responsibilities and duties will look a little bit different, more so than they did before. You know, our focus has always been with our custodial staff to clean the buildings. And while we're still going to clean the buildings, the focus is going to change from cleaning to disinfecting. And so how do we make sure that we're still do cleaning but disinfecting our buildings, especially hitting those areas more often than we have maybe done in the past in our past protocols? When are you actually going to make a decision on how things will work so that we can plan and help our students plan for the return to school? Well, so, so again, our, this is our plan. But we're asking for feedback about it. So we are watching it. We want your survey data to come back tomorrow and we want to, if we have to adjust, we will adjust our plan based on what parents are thinking in terms of, you know, the alignment that we have currently to the leveling system. So as I said, our county is currently in red. In our current plan, that means that we would come back in a hybrid model if school were to start tomorrow. That is why we're asking for this information from all of you so that we can adjust way before school starts if that plan needs to look different. And again, we need to stay flexible and we need to be patient and compassionate as we play out the next six weeks because, as you know, and as you've seen since March, how quickly things have changed. And and I do anticipate that there are things that are going to change between now and the start of school. So we're really asking for everyone to be understanding. Be patient with us. We've given you a high level of detail here in our plan. I can tell you, many of my colleagues got this plan and said, ours is not as thorough as yours. So you know, we've tried to be as transparent as possible, thorough as possible, as proactive as we possibly can with the information that we have right now. Knowing full well that this is not, this is not the end game. This is probably just the start of the game in terms of we actually start school here in the fall. How will rooms for classrooms that are shared amongst multiple teachers and classes look to meet the CDC guidelines? We are, that's what our building are working on right now. We know that we have several teachers that have or several buildings that have maybe two or three teachers that share spaces, looking at barriers in those rooms if they're not possible to spread out and put in different locations in the buildings. Is the preschool class going to be following the same hybrid model of the county if of the county continues to be in red? We, yes, we would be looking at, you know, following the whole district, following whatever that that plan is in red, if that's what our community decides they want to keep. That's okay. If a student is enrolled for in school option and parent keeps child home due to rising cases, yet school is open, will they be penalized? No, definitely not. You know, we certainly are not in the business to penalize kids in any way, shape or form, and we want our kids to learn. And it's important for us that if if a parent feels that they cannot send their child to school or they're they're concerned about rising cases, absolutely keep your child home. And we will do whatever we can to provide the best education for your children. When can we expect the final back to school plan to be released? So this really is our final back to school plan and to the point of the plan, there's different scenarios depending on the spread of this virus. And so we put this plan in place. We're asking for feedback on it. I don't know if this plan will ever be finalized. It's never going to be here. Here's what it is. It's going, it's got to stay fluid as, you know, we are experiencing different levels of spread throughout our county. And we can't make decisions to keep kids in school if we can't make sure that they're safe or that the spread in the county is spreading faster than, you know, what we can keep kids in school or if there's a stay at home order. So this really is our final plan that we're asking for feedback on, but know that our final plan is always going to be a fluid plan and it needs to change as this situation changes and evolves around us. Student parking, if we go hybrid, will there be a reduced or no fee? So, yes, we've looked at, we've looked at parking fee already. And there was a decrease in our parking fee for the upcoming school year that will be, and I don't, I don't believe it's been in our handbook yet to be board approved because we're, we're waiting to the last possible second to look at approving our student handbooks as well. But we have reduced our parking fee to $25 a semester, I believe. Well, online learning through the school district have a different registration fee compared to in person. That's a great question. One that I'm going to defer to our treasurer who's not here with us today, but certainly we'll have to look at that option because my, my feeling would be that depending on the course, whether it's online or it's in person, may have the same supplies and may require the same material. So I would say that they probably wouldn't look much different, but there certainly could be courses or specifics for the courses to have those fees look different. I I would want to know the number of kids in the room spacing before I committed in person. Would that information be known before a decision has to be made by the parents? In terms of, let me read that again. I would want to know the number of kids per room and spacing before I committed to in person learning. So, I mean, we can, we can, we certainly can look at that and put that out there. It's going to be different at each building as our, you know, our class sizes are different and what we're able to hold capacity wise. This is also a scheduling thing. So it's going to be determined based on the building as to how many we are going to allow sign up for a specific section of classes. This will also be determined by if we have a significant percentage of our population that wants online, then those numbers could definitely change because that alone by having people sign up for online versus in person is going to have a lower number of kids in each of the classes. So we can say that this is the max for this room, but certainly there's always a chance for it being less, if that would be helpful. We can definitely look into putting that information out to parents. How will high school midterms work prior to Thanksgiving during online period of delay until January? Is this something that's at the building decision? So we're, this is definitely at a building decision. We are going to work with the teachers to say, you know, maybe your midterm exam is online during that time. Last year, we pushed them all right before, right before the holiday break, even though the semester wasn't over until January, or it might flip back to, we don't do those semester, those midterms exams till closer to the end of the semester in January and not try to put them in. Or it might flip back to, we don't do those semester, those midterms exams till closer to the end of the semester in January and not try to put them in at, at the start of Christmas break. And that's going to be a high school decision, not a district decision. Will there be a full time nurse in each of the building and with that, will there be separate rooms, nurse stations? So, yes, we talked about having separate areas of the clinic where we would have, you know, one for kids who maybe present during the day that are symptomatic. And then another place where kids who, you know, fall down on the playground or just need their daily medication would go to a different location. So, you know, not all the buildings are capable of having two full clinics, but there will be two defined definite separated spaces for kids to go for daily medical needs. Versus kids who might be presenting with any type of symptoms of COVID. And in terms of full time nurses at each building, we are looking into the possibility, but no decision has been made on that. Front, but certainly a training aspect to train staff and some of those healthcare needs. Certainly with the nurses being with the kids who might present with symptoms and more so looking at, you know, a health aid to assist with the bumps and the bruises. And the kids who need their, you know, daily medications. All right. I thank you very much. I know this has been a lot of information and it's, it's information overload for all of us. I do appreciate it. Again, we continue and will be transparent with our plan. Thank you for all of you who have tuned in and we really appreciate your patience and your understanding as we are planning for something that none of us in our lifetime ever thought we would had to. Nor did we want to. So we definitely appreciate all of you and I appreciate all the questions. If you have any more in the meantime, you can go to our website and post them or schoolopeningquestions@bbhcsd.org. And continue to ask your questions. We will continue to update and provide feedback on frequently asked questions and get you information out as quickly as we receive it. So, thank you.